This meeting, which is hereby called to order at 7:00 PM, is in compliance with the notice requirements of the law. Public notice was posted in the Office of the Board of Education and communicated to the municipal court, the Daily Record, and the Star Ledger on Saturday, November 14th. Due to the current public health emergency, this evening's meeting is being conducted as a virtual meeting. Instructions for accessing and participating in the virtual meeting were posted on the district website, dover-nj.org. And may we all stand for flag salute, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Minkowitz, may we have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Catano, we said, is not present at the moment?
Correct. I don't see her.
Actually, I do see her.
Okay, good.
Okay.
I don't see her.
There she is.
There she is.
She's just coming on. Okay.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Mullen?
Here.
Ms. Nutting? Ms. DeRouwitz?
Here.
Ms. Ruiz?
Present.
Dr. Sainer?
Present.
Ms. Viveros?
Present.
Ms. Grisales?
Present.
And we do have Ms. Catano.
Yay.
Awesome.
Full house. Okay, thank you so much. As our special meeting, we do have public comment section. So the board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters. To ensure fair and orderly expression of such comments, each statement should be held to a time period of three minutes. Public comments limited to items on this agenda should be entertained for approximately 30 minutes upon the discretion of the presiding officer. Since this is a virtual meeting occurring during COVID-19 shutdown, public comment has been solicited through Google Form on the district website. Members of the public can also participate during the public portion of the meeting through this Zoom session by activating the raised hand function at the bottom of your screen. Please understand that public comment portions of our agenda are not structured as questions and answer sessions, but rather they are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. The board may or may not respond to public comments. However, all comments are considered and will be investigated and addressed as appropriate. Please be courteous and mindful of the rights of others when providing comments. Comments may not be abusive, obscene, threatening, or irrelevant. Please understand that students and employees have specific legal and privacy protections. The board is not permitted to respond in public to comments about students or employees. Please be advised that you are commenting at your own risk. Any public comments that are directed at a particular individual or individuals could subject you to legal liability for defamation. Are there any public comments or any raised hands at this time?
There's no written comments on the Google Form.
Okay. And do we have any attendees?
There's no attendees.
Okay, all right, so no hands. Okay, so Dr. Sainer and the Ad hoc Committee, may you please introduce your presentation for anti-racism training tonight, please?
Yes, now that my mic is on. Yeah, yes, I am so honored to introduce Kelly Mullen-Kennel. We're thankful to have her with us tonight. She has worked in diversity and inclusion for many years. Mrs. Catano has raved about her workshops, and we're so thankful for her time and expertise as our board takes this first important step for our district tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Kelly, who will do a better job of introducing herself. Thank you.
I don't think so. You did a great job. Thank you very much. So I'm looking at my camera, but it's in a strange position, and it's brand new, so please bear with me. So my name is Kelly Mullen-Kennel, and I'm really happy to be here this evening. I'm, to give you a little bit of information about myself, I have been working in the diversity and inclusion field for many, many years. My background is in cultural anthropology. I am a first-generation immigrant. I'm originally from Haiti. I grew up and I came to this country when I was very young. So topics of identity and race and marginalization have always been very important to me, and that's why I pursued this area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. These are really interesting times, to say the least, right? There appears to be so much chaos. We're in the middle of a pandemic that we can't seem to control. As a nation, we're divided. The holidays are upon us, and we're advised not to get together with family or friends because it could be dangerous. You know, years ago, I used to read movie scripts for one of the movie production companies. If someone had tried to pitch a story to me, I would have said, "Pass. Too unrealistic." All these things can't happen all at once. But you know, that's our reality now. All these realities are true, and we can choose to look at this time in a different way. We can consider this to be a transformative period for us as a country, a time where we all step back and examine not only what is going on around us, but we can be intentional about examining ourselves and our own behaviors. So I commend all of you for wanting to engage in this exercise tonight. Next slide. So I think somebody's helping me with the slides. Are you seeing the slides?
No, there's no slides being shown at the moment.
Yeah, give us a moment. I think our facilitator is posting.
Okay, sorry. While we wait, you know, in preparation for this meeting, I asked everyone to take the IAT test, the implicit association test. And it's really an interesting test because I use it in training all the time in the corporate setting. And it's not meant to be shared or necessarily discussed, but it's a way for us to have context or really frame the discussion. And the funny thing is that whenever people take that, they'll take various forms, and then they're not happy with the results. They keep taking it over and over again, and they get the same results. So it's really interesting. So if we go to the slide number two, I wanted to be able to show you, for people who did not have gotten to take the test, I wanted to show this short video called "The Look" that was produced by Proctor and Gamble. I'm not sure if any of you have seen it. Okay, here it is. It's very short. I don't hear the sound. Do you hear sound?
No, I think in Zoom you have to enable the sound when you're sharing a video.
When you're sharing, yes.
Ah, I see.
So...
It's in the Zoom settings, not in the video.
Right, it's when you set it up. You would have to pause the video and go to the Zoom settings, really.
We're all getting to be experts in technology now because we have to be. I'm far from expert, believe me. I wouldn't even allow myself to man the presentation myself.
I don't know who's sharing, but when you select the sharing, there's an option, "Advanced," that gives you the shared computer audio.
You know what? We don't need to take a lot of time. You could actually, you don't actually need the sound. You can show it this way. That's fine. Great, thank you, thank you. I wanted to share the video because as you'll see as we go on through our conversation tonight, some of the topics that we touch upon really relates to the experience of this one person during the course of a day. So tonight, really, we have a short period of time. We're not going to solve anything tonight. It's really a beginning of a discussion. Any one of the topics that we have listed, defining diversity, touch upon the history of discrimination and racism, bias and experience, racism in education, and becoming a change agent. Any one of these topics can take several hours. So tonight, we're only going to touch upon them quickly. It's really meant to be a dialogue starter. So, next slide, please? If you could just switch over to the next slide?
Mark, I think you need to reshare. We're not seeing the slideshow.
Okay. Great. So when we talk about diversity, what do we mean by the diversity? You know, it's a really large topic. And my title at work is diversity. I'm a Global Head of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And what do we mean by diversity? Diversity is really a range of differences, right? It's all the different aspects that make us who we are, whether it's our gender, our race, our ethnicity, our sexual orientation, our abilities, our personalities, our immigrant status, socioeconomic, and our education. So if we think about diversity, we think about it really holistically. Next slide, please? So, excuse me, one moment. I'm not sure what you're seeing. Are you seeing slide five? Because I can see both slides right now.
Slide five, but we also see the next slide.
The next slide, okay, that's not a problem. Okay, so if we talk about slide six, please? If we start to define, I included some words really to set context, words like, general words that we associate with diversity. So race. I'm not, okay, sorry. So we decide race as any one of the groups that humans are divided into based on physical traits. Interesting thing about race is that it's a social construct, right? They tell us it's a social construct. Ethnicity is related to large groups of people classed according to common racial, national, tribal, religious, linguistic, or cultural origin. Sexual orientation is a person's sexual identity. Sex, gender, or gender identity is the biological form. Gender or gender identity is the behavioral. So we make the distinction. And more and more younger people, the younger generation, are identifying as non-binary, a spectrum of gender identities that are not exclusively masculine or feminine. It's interesting that the 2020 census question about race is based on how you identify. And in the US, race reflects the definition, social definition, and not necessarily a biological one. For Hispanics, Hispanics considered an ethnicity and not a race. Many places around the world, Africa, Middle East, Europe, people identify more strongly within ethnicity than they do race. Next definition. We want to talk about intersectionality. Again, we see that the younger generation in the workplace, in universities, are really focusing on intersectional identities. It's the interconnectedness of your various dimensions. So it's a lens, a prism, for seeing the way in which various forms of inequalities merge. So if I'm a woman, but I'm also a black woman, so my experience, my intersectional experience as a woman and as a black person differs than a woman who's a white person. So intersectionality is really often focused on marginalized groups. It's a term coined by Kimberle Crenshaw, who's a race scholar from Columbia University and an attorney. Racism is a belief that a race is fundamental determinant of human traits and capacities, and that racial differences produce an inherent superiority, right? So we all know what racism is. We know people who are judged by just the way they look. Xenophobia is fear and hatred of strangers, but it's really fear of anyone from another country. Homophobia is irrational fear, also aversion to discrimination of homosexuals and homosexuality. When we talk about inequalities as separate, you know, we have to be mindful that there's often an intersection. Next slide, please? Now, you know, when I say patterns of historical discrimination, and I'm really going to touch this very quickly. And by introducing this, I really just want to show that this concept we have of discrimination is, unfortunately, racial bias has been an integral part of our American history since the first Europeans stepped on the land that belonged to Native Americans. So we can talk about slavery, children being sold into slavery. American, Native American children in the 1800s being placed in boarding schools so that they can be learned to assimilate, lose their language and identity. I just want to be able to provide some context that many of the issues that we're facing today, they're not new. It's been, unfortunately, a pattern. And you know, we know that slavery not only inhibited family formation, but made stable, secure family life very difficult. Next. And as we talk about immigration, it's been an issue for centuries. And you know, it's interesting to show that at certain times in history, different groups were used as scapegoats, marginalized, and treated as if they were less than humans. So there was a time in this country that Irish people were not considered white, believe it or not. They were not categorized as white, and they were discriminated against. No Irish need apply. They were discriminated for Catholicism. Here we have a picture of a church that was burned in Maine. So there was a lot of concern about these new immigrants as non-British Europeans, Irish, Germans, Italians, begin to immigrate into the US. They were met with hatred, discrimination, and were very much marginalized and not considered worthy to be Americans. Next. So we had discrimination laws, right? By law, African-American children were not allowed to read and write. Chinese-American children were barred completely from going to school. Later legislation stated that they had a right to public education, but segregated them into Chinese-only schools. Latinos face the same fate as the Chinese in being shut out from education. Jim Crow laws made its appearance in 1877. The separate but equal doctrine created an educational system of segregated schools, and it didn't stop until the '50s with Brown versus the Board of Education. And many argue that forms of segregation in schools still exist today. So we see that, you know, we see these posters, and it's really interesting to see, you know, it's a reflection of what the reality that existed in the country at various times in history. And we don't have to look past, look very fast, very far in the past to see that discrimination still exists, right? Here we're talking about legislators talking about the legality of keeping small children in prison away from their families. Blame, marginalization of a race of people for spreading virus. We watched the murder of a man live on TV. We are presently dealing with issues of blame, marginalization, lack of empathy, and social justice and crisis. It's unfortunate, but this is our reality. Next slide. But what's interesting is that many of these are rooted in this concept we call race. However, we say that it's a construct, right? It's not real. The American Anthropological Association, the scientists, say that there is no biological evidence for race, which means that it doesn't exist biologically, but we know that conceptually and socially it does. Various countries categorize race differently. Here in the US, a light-skinned, blue-eyed, blond-haired person with one drop of black blood is black. In Brazil, we have various categories based on skin color. But regardless of the science, the reality is that a person's race impact their lived experience. And that's what we really want to focus on. What do we want to talk about? Please go to the next slide. I'm actually almost embarrassed to show this slide because in training, we, in the diversity world, make fun of each other for using this iceberg model. It's a bit clichic, but it's pretty accurate. When we see an iceberg, 10% of that iceberg is above waterline, right? Most of the iceberg, we don't see. So you know, most of the iceberg is hidden beneath the water. The strongest, most substantial part of the iceberg is not visible to the naked eye. And judging by the iceberg, by what is only visible, we can see above the other waterline traits like skin color, gender, race, when we see a person, is what's evident to us. But there's so much that we don't see. We don't know their value systems. We don't know their learning styles. We don't know their personality profile. We don't know their family status or perspectives. And that's what is met by this iceberg model. Much of what we see about people is a very, very small portion. To truly understand them, you need to learn more about them. We need to go under the waterline. Because if you were steering a ship and you judge the size of the iceberg simply by the tip, you'd be in a lot of trouble. It would be very dangerous. So since the substantive, the most substantial part of the iceberg is hidden, it would be inaccurate to judge the strength of that iceberg. And the same concept applies to individual diversity. So what are the major topics we talk about? When we talk about diversity, when we talk about race and discrimination, it's a topic of bias, right? Bias. If we go to the next slide, please? Okay, bias is a negative, positive belief about someone or something. Bias can be either explicit or implicit. Explicit bias is a conscious bias, so that you're consciously holding a certain belief about someone or a situation. Implicit bias is unconscious, attitudes that we hold about people in our situations that maybe we're not aware of, that somewhere behind, somewhere in our brain, it exists, but we're not actually aware of it. And there are very different types of biases. Next slide. We have affinity bias, bias that leads us to favor some people with whom we share a connection or familiarity. Now, we can know, you know, we know inherently, right? If we're in a situation where we meet someone who shares the same background, speaks the same language, or have the same customs, we tend to think better of them. You know, that's our affinity. We tend to think better of them because they're similar to us. The halo effect is a different type of bias. It occurs when we perceive one great thing about a person and let that halo glow of that one thing color our opinion of anything else that person does. So we value high grades. So when we see a student consistently get high grades, we have a tendency to think other positive things about that student. Maybe that person, that student is a better person, comes from a better family. That's what the halo effect defines, represents. The horn effect is direct opposite of the halo. It occurs when our perception of someone is unduly influenced by one negative trait. If we don't like wearing student dresses, right? We can attribute a lot of other traits to that student based on that one belief. We create narratives about who their family is and who they are as a person. And confirmation bias is a tendency for people to favor information that their existing beliefs confirm. So if we hold a negative belief about a certain group of people, we will judge the behavior of someone from that group. And we tend to believe that that one behavior is representative of all, of the entire group. So that's what we mean by confirmation bias. I mean, there are several forms of biases. The important thing to understand is that biases exist, and we are sometimes very aware of them. And sometimes, they're so far into our subconscious that we may not understand how they are influencing our behavior. And so what's really important to remember, next slide, please, is that biases create our values. They create our value system, which forms our beliefs and becomes our behavior. That's the important thing to remember about bias. And bias is related often to our intent and our impact. Intent versus impact. It's a really tricky thing because it's a conversation that we have, I know in the workplace that I have constantly when there's any sort of conflict. Because a person can say, "Well, I didn't mean it. I didn't intend to say this about someone." But our intentions can only be known by us, right? What's really important is the impact of our behavior. People only know the impact of our behavior because it influences how they feel. We used to say things like to our children, and this is how we heard from our parents, the golden rule, right? We want to, we should treat people how we want to be treated. But actually, right now, that rule has changed. We talk about the platinum rule. The platinum rule states, "Treat others as they would like to be treated." So it's not about us. It's about really respecting the other person and respecting their belief system and their culture. Next slide, please? Any questions? We're a small group, so if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
I do. Was wondering if you could give us an example. For me, it's the first time regarding the confirmation bias. Could you give us an example of what that is?
Yeah. Confirmation bias. You know what? One example we use sometimes in training is that we have a bias to think that certain people have certain inherent traits. Like, very common bias is that Asians are good in mathematics, right? So if we meet someone who is Asian, we just automatically believe that that person has a strong, you know, strong skill in mathematics. Or, you know, there are various ways that we talk about confirmation bias as well. For instance, if I have a student or I know someone, and they're very kind, and they're... and, um, and they're very kind and they're very polite, we tend to then, um, both, you know, if we, if our, um, value system is that we, we are very formal, I'll give you another example. If we're a very formalized person and we meet someone who is also very formal, it confirms in our mind something that we already know, something that we're already very comfortable with. So that then we start to attribute all other, you know, traits to that person. You know, because it's affirming something that we already know and feel confident about.
Thank you.
I, I'm not sure I made that, sorry. Yes?
Sorry, I just want to add something to that. So one of the things about confirmation bias is that, um, and I'll use the example of, um, a, a, a racist stereotype that many of us may have. Um, black men are good at sports, good at football, good at basketball. Um, so, so you have this bias. It's a societal bias. It, it, it maybe isn't something you intended to be, um, something racist or, but it's just something you picked up in society. Um, and then you are an educator or you are a coach. Um, so you have this bias that you don't even necessarily realize you have, which, um, then pushes you to expect more of your black athletes to, um, to push them more, to maybe even give them more opportunities, um, to have them be the starting lineup. So you are giving them more opportunities to become better athletes. So then they do become better athletes because they now have the, the, the support from you and the belief from you. And, and so now your bias is confirmed. Yeah. Uh, on a negative side, if you think, uh, black students are just not good at writing. So you, you are then blinded by your bias to a good short story or a good poem or a good essay. Or you critique black student writers, uh, more harshly. Uh, and then therefore give them lower grades, confirming your pre-existing bias. So it's kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy in the person that holds the bias.
That, thank you, thank you. That was great. That was a great dis, uh, the explanation. And, and it, it happens all the time. Um, it's, it, it happens in the workplace. It happens in schools. I deal with it mostly in the workplace and, and it can cause, uh, but you know, it's so ingrained in our minds based on messages that we get all around us, right? About, uh, about, you know, the example that Carol gave about athletes, about whore athletes. And so it, it creates this narrative that we hold on to and which can be, uh, of course, um, uh, very, very, the implications are, are not good. Um, you know, biases, you know, as we just discussed, affect our decision-making process in, in, in following ways, our perception, how we see people and perceived reality. We just gave some examples. Our behaviors, how we, how receptive, friendly we are towards other people. Um, and we, we, we see that, uh, we talk about, you know, um, affinity bias. Maybe we're nicer to people who share the same background as ours or share the same race. Uh, our attention, which aspects of a person we pay attention to. Um, our listening skills, how much we actively listen to what people say. You know, it's based on our bias and how relevant we really think they are or what there's, you know, or the value of what they're saying. Um, and our microaffirmations, how much, how little we can, we, um, comfort certain people in certain situations, right? Um, lots of, we're not going to be able to go into micro behaviors, but microaggressions, micro behaviors, behaviors that are really very subtle and, and often people can't articulate it. But they know, they know how it makes them feel. You know, they make, it does, it makes them feel not included. Um, these are microaggressions and microaffirmations.
Carol, if I could, uh, make a comment?
Yes.
Um, my experience has been, um, that I think many times we, um, we consider biases or discrimination in the majority of the times when it's not in our favor. But when it benefits us, we don't speak against it. We, we're actually for it. And, uh, we sometimes even push for it. When it's something that's going to benefit me or benefit someone that I know because of a certain bias or a certain characteristic or a certain benefit that's targeted at a certain criteria. But yeah, when it, when it's something that's used against me, then I don't like that definition or that decision being made in that sense. And I've seen that obviously, you know, a lot, a lot of times in the corporate world where I come, where I, where I work. And also in the social spectrum where, you know, working with churches and things of that nature where we serve the society. And when you do certain initiatives and certain things for a particular target group because they have a need, everybody who's not in that group feels left out. But then when you do it for that other group, that fellow at one point left out, then the other ones that are not being served feel like you're not really, uh, being open to everybody. So I think sometimes unfortunately, you know, it depends on the situation and who's the person that's not included, if you want to call it in that sense of the word. That they might feel like it's not really fair or, you know, it's a bias or things like that. But I think many times there is no ill intent when people, you know, for good reasons, give somebody an opportunity. Uh, and sometimes we, unfortunately, we don't assume positive intent. Instead, we go with the negative, uh, intent first and we think that it's for negative reasons that they're doing it for that.
Yeah. No, no, uh, that, that's a, a fair point, Benjamin. I, I think that the, the issue for us is bias is that, that's important to know is that we hold them, right? Whether they're conscious or unconscious. We, each one of us hold them. And what we have to do is go through a process of really understanding them because whether positive or negative, they do impact others' behaviors. And in, in, whether in the corporate world, in education, it really impact, it makes, uh, it influences the way, um, we're treated and it impacts our lives. So, so, um, even when sometimes a bias appears to be positive, um, we still need to be very cognizant of the source of it, you know? Um, because it, it, it's, it pivots very quickly. You know, it pivots very quickly and create, and it can create a system where one group is marginalized and the other, um, and, and one group is marginalized and, and we create, um, conflict. Um, because people feel that one group is being favored over another. It's, it's a very complex situation. I mean, all we can say is having a sense of awareness where we can identify those situations where bias occurs. Um, I want to go to the next slide. Uh, you know, we talk about bias. And I think sometimes what is missing in a lot of our conversations, and actually today I was part of a, uh, P, PricewaterhouseCoopers has a CEO pledge where a lot of organizations take this pledge, their CEOs take this pledge to end, um, discrimination and bias in the workplace. Um, because, uh, or to talk about bias and social justice. So it's a CEO pledge and all the CEOs and their, um, chief diversity officers, um, uh, get together to ensure that they can pull through some accountability in the workplace. And, you know, so today was an all-day meeting, um, to discuss this. And one of the things that really I was very happy about that we're actually having more of a discussion about now are social determinants. As a, as a person from a pharmaceutical company, I talk often about social determinants of health. But there are so many social determinants that we fail to recognize. You know, their conditions, uh, people are, in which people are born, grow, live, work, uh, and age. These are circumstances that shape our external factors, which are often both political and social. Uh, factors which relate to the distribution of money, power, resources. Um, and so the social determinants are important to, to, to really, um, discuss, identify because as we have a tendency to blame, you know, to put the blame on certain, on, on people. Um, and we say that certain groups are, are one way or another without recognizing that the social determinants, the, the, the systems that, that are in place that causes some of the inequities. So I feel that it's really important for us to really consider, um, when we're having these discussions, that there are social determinants. Um, so the other, uh, thing that I wanted to talk about, the next thing, if you change the slide, please. Okay. Is, um, racism. Um, this has been a topic and discussion for a long, for a while. Actually, Des and I, uh, work, used to work at the same company. I am no longer there. I moved on to another organization. But, um, when, when this whole thing of, uh, social justice, when we, uh, when we actually witnessed the murder of George Floyd and we began to have this re, reawakening, this discussion on, on, um, on social justice, um, we, we started to really take a look more closely about, um, systematic racism. And the fact is throughout our history here in the U.S., um, there've been limitations and denial to access to education. Um, and, you know, we, I've been reading more, um, from, in, um, the literature from Gloria Latzen-Billing. She argues that the framing of the achievement gap serves as distraction from the historical, economic, socio-political and moral decisions and policies that characterize our society and have created an education debt. I thought that was really important to talk to you guys in this, in this space, uh, to introduce it, um, a bit because we talk about various other forms in a corporate, um, setting. But here, uh, uh, since your focus is education, I thought it was really important to really take a, a, a look at that. Um, because we talk about limitations and denial of the access to education. Uh, created a culture where students of color were treated as less than equals. Institutional racism has created an invisible change holding students of color back in this educational system. And this is what we're trying to write, right? Uh, for many students of color, everyday racism is part of life. Uh, they are sometimes overlooked. They begin to internalize these ideas that they do not have anything to contribute. They not, they're not as good as others. Uh, you know, and so it's really important for us to take a look at bias, take a look at racism in the context of the systems that we have in place and, and how we can, uh, address some of these issues, um, based on, on, um, what, uh, what we actually have to deal with in terms of our everyday realities. Please, uh, next slide. You know, um, Richard Valencia is another prominent scholar. Um, talks about evolving forms of, of bias in education. Um, and, you know, he talks about this new form of bias in education. Um, uh, and it describes that there are new tools of individualized analysis of underachievement. Right? Uh, that are used to rationalize inequities. And, you know, those are some of the systems that we talk about. Blaming the victim approach instead of focuses on some issues that we really need to address as a country, as, as systems, as, uh, people who have influence. Um, you know, instead of focusing on blaming on, let's say, parents, lack of attention or education for the lack of academic success of our students. Why don't we take a look at what exists and how we can change it? Uh, we see, I've read articles about English as a second language being used to shame students. Um, even the topic of multiculturalism, you know, we used to talk about we're a melting pot. We say now, no, 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 we're not a melting pot. We're more like a mosaic because now we want to acknowledge individual differences. So, um, multiculturalism is important, but we have to be careful. Um, and not to discount, uh, uh, the discussion of racism and its impact. Um, and ignoring racism is resulting in a deficit for students because systematic issues are not being addressed. We need to step back, reevaluate each of our behaviors and ask ourselves some very important questions. And the next one, the next slide. Are we as educators? Um, are we as educators able to really take the time for self-awareness? Right? And this is what we're, we're talking about here tonight. Um, do we have an established idea of which student will, uh, or is inherently intelligent or capable, capable of being successful? How do we judge which families value education? Do we check our own biases in the classroom? Do we teach students to think critically? How do we teach our children to understand their own identities and their own histories? Do we provide an inclusive view of history? How do we teach racism and its impact on society? And do our students feel a real sense of belonging in our classrooms? Next slide, please. So, you know, with, there's, Abraham has a book now, Anti-Racist. Um, and so it's really not enough to feel sad or bad when we see something is wrong. We each need to be proactive. We need to speak up. We need to do the right thing. We need to be the change to Code Gandhi that we want to see. We need to be change agents. And that whole concept of a change agent is not easy, right? Becoming a change agent is a process. It means being self-aware, as we mentioned. Uh, learning to identify our biases, perceptions and behaviors so we can change them. Showing respectful curiosity to learning about others, their culture and stories. You know, it's not rude to ask person about themselves, about their rituals, about their, their, uh, elements of their culture, as long as we do so respectfully. Keeping an open mind and listening to understand, not to judge. And Benjamin, you mentioned assuming positive intent. That's always a good way, a good approach. Being empathetic, compassionate and supportive. And really understanding that we often have more in common than we think we do. It's not easy. We're working with the very tool that causes the problem, right? Our minds. So it's not easy. We, we're, we're blocked. It's going to take time. It's going to take patience. And, but we owe it to ourselves, our children and each other. Um, because if COVID has taught us only one thing and that it's simple fact that we are all humans and we share the common vulnerabilities. Um, we, we, we are living in unprecedented times. Highly divisive, but also focused on social justice. So we really have the opportunity for positive change, um, for us now and for our children. So I want to leave you with our next slide, which is one of my favorites. And it's Einstein. It says, "We cannot solve problems with the same thinking we used when we created them." We really just need to take the time and, um, and I'm really, this is a time for me that's exciting to be in this, in this type of work because we, we're, we have a moment. You know, there's, people are willing to have the discussion. And we have to stop and second guess it, you know? Because I, in the workplace, people say to me, "Oh, really? Now people are discovering racism? I've been living with it all my life." That's true, but if... Excuse me. Sorry, I'm... I've been talking too much. But if not now, then when? So we have an opportunity. Um, and I'm really happy that you, uh, gave me the time today to have the discussion with you. Because like I said, this is just the beginning of a dialogue. And I'm sure that you didn't really learn... And I'm sure that you didn't really learn anything that was earth-shattering on you. But it was a, it was an opportunity set back, you know, and just, you know, take a moment to think about some of these ideas and these concepts. So that when we're faced with situations, we can maybe go about handling them differently or encouraging a certain type of dialogue with people that we normally wouldn't, wouldn't engage with. And, and we see that right now with the state of our country, it's too divisive and nothing's going to happen unless we learn to be more self-aware and to start these types of conversations. So, thank you. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. One of the things that I think I, I would like for us as a board is to, to, you know, I took some screenshots that I want to share with you that resonated with me from Kelly's presentation. But really, how do we as a board become change agents when we are policymakers? And, you know, how do we trickle that down to obviously the superintendent who we are in, right? In charge of holding him accountable for everything and then him trickling it down to everyone else. So would love for you, you know, for all of us to kind of think about how we, in our role here, how do we make this happen? Because as, as we have discussed in the purpose of this training is really the need to make sure that we're checking ourselves in all levels. And, and necessarily being aware of, you know, self-aware as much as possible. And so, Mr. Robles?
I just have a question for Kelly, from her experience in the space that she's worked in. Curious to know if, you know, from, from your experience, the people who have, who you've seen that, or maybe you've spoken to or experienced that have really defined biases and, and areas that they really need to work on and are obvious to you as in your role. How often do you see that they are just random, like nothing to do with their experiences? It's just, you know, maybe they saw something, but it's not what they lived. Maybe they just heard it from somebody, but it's not their own experience? Or is it the majority of the cases where, you know, it's based on what they've experienced and how they have, you know, encountered certain situations that have led to those kind of biases that they may have?
Know what? I, I think it's a mixture. I, I think it's really a mixture because, you know, often people, you know, there are so, there are experiences, but we get so many messages, right? We get messages from the media. We get messages from things around us about, you know, certain realities. And so we, people start to make up ideas in their minds, right, about, about differences in the groups. So I, I think it, it really changes. And what this, this time has really shown me in this work is how much work we really have to do. You know, and I have to tell you, I, I've been in this in a long time, but I'm really surprised at the amount of work that we have to do still. Because, you know, we work together, we spend so much time together, you know, in, in your, you know, your roles as a board members, but, you know, in your other jobs. And yet, you know, I've come to realize during this time that's been really sort of unveiled to me is how much people were holding in. And a lot of it is just fear. A lot of it is just based on fear. Fear of the other, fear of this thing, this like boogie monster, you know? And, and for me, it's exasperating sometimes because, you know, I'm looking at, you know, the screen and there's such diversity and I know nothing about any one of you. I can't make any assumptions about any one of you, you know? You, you know, you could be all wonderful people. You could be all terrible people. You know, you could be people I could be very close friends. You could be relatives. We don't know anything about each other and yet these assumptions. And they impact how we treat each other. They impact our behavior. And that's the sad part. That's the sad part. And what worries me is what our children are seeing right now. My children are all grown up, but I, I, I feel for small, for people with small children. How do you explain all of this?
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I, I, it, it is a very sad time because, like I always had this belief that our country has really moved on and we go through different generations and we learn so much. And now I realize it's like we're starting over.
Yeah, and they work back.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, I mean, my wife, she's affronting so many people she went to high school with because she can't stand, their beliefs are so out there.
Yeah.
And, and yet, I'm, I'm discovering a lot more myself and, and the fact that some people are afraid of me because they've had issues with people who are white that have done terrible things to them. And, you know, I've lived in Dover my whole life. So maybe I was sheltered a little bit, but then I'm also seeing it in Dover too. And it's like, oh my God, you can't escape it anywhere.
Yeah.
And it's exactly about that, Mr. Miller, about having the awareness and, and having the, the willingness to look within, to look inside, right? And, and are we doing that across our district? Are, are, are students doing that, you know, with themselves for each other, right? Growing up in Dover, same as you, you know, I was the ESL kid, right? I was the bilingual kid when I wasn't bilingual yet. I was monolingual only in Spanish. So language matters, right? And so it's, it's, it's a lot of, of, you know, are, are all of us, and this is a great opportunity for growth out of a horrible situation that we are, again, visiting a horrible situation in our country. But I think we learn from our elders and the great work that they did and the movements that they had. And, and we need to continue to, to, within us, right? One of the huge things that I struggle with is, is, is language, right? And, and I think that, you know, we are America, well, we're North America, not only America, right? You know, we are, I am not Spanish. I am not from Spain, right? I speak Spanish, but I am, you know, so I think it's very much about how sensitive we are. And politically correct terms are hard, but I think it's also asking. And one of the things that I like Kelly saying, that Kelly said, it's not disrespectful to ask questions, right, to inquire about who, how do you identify? How do you want me to address you? You know, what are your, you know, customs? And, and I think that sometimes we, we stare away from that because we are afraid.
Yeah. And, and you know, if I could just say one thing about the politically correct, it's really evolution. And people tend to, you know, you know, the people say politically correct. It's an evolution of terms. Now we use Latinx in, in language, right? As more, you know, a Latina, Latino, when we used to just say Hispanic, you know? Black or African-American. The world changes and our language changes because words matter. Yeah.
And it's hard to know what those words are sometimes.
It's true.
Because, yeah, I don't, you know, you don't know. And, and then I don't want to give up on people that I see that are just so out there because I think that's wrong too. But trying to find a way to kind of get to them a little bit at a time.
And I think talking, right?
Yeah, you just have to do a little bit of that.
Great.
One of the things that I've had a challenge with, not a challenge, but I guess, I see that people are not that open with this whole, obviously, situation that we're living through right now. Is that because I didn't experience something, means that you can't have experienced it. And that's not, that doesn't make any sense.
That it doesn't exist?
Because, you know, if, if somebody, their whole life, they experienced police being against them, treating them unfairly, what are they going to think when they go somewhere else and they see police? They're going to think that those police are going to be the same as what they lived their whole life. Versus somebody who's been fortunate and have had any discrimination against them with the police. They're going to say, "Police are good." So to me, my perception can be totally different from someone else, but yet I can't allow someone else to have a different, different perception, even if it's a positive or negative. You know, that's unfortunately, I think, the situation that we're in. Where if we see somebody that thinks different from us, we call them insensitive. We call them things that, you know, because they don't think the same way I do. They haven't lived the same things I have lived. And unfortunately, it goes for both ways. It goes for positive or negative. And instead, why can't we have a dialogue and say, "Okay, well, my experience has been different. Let me hear what your experience has been and let's see what, you know, how can we get somewhere positive from where we are now rather than just keep fighting each other?" And I think our town, as diverse as it is, and obviously mostly Latino or Hispanic, you know, we need to do a better job as those people who are in, you know, in this, these positions that we are, to be more open to hear people out and, you know, just find out what struggles are you going through that we as an education system can provide better tools, can provide better access, can give you better experience than maybe what you've experienced otherwise or what you're experiencing now.
So Dr. Sener, and, and I think, I mean, then Ms. Catano, if I can comment quickly on Mr. Robles. I, I think for me, it's all about, right, are we willing to, to, to check our own biases, right? Because there's a lot of biases within just the Latino, right, within among ourselves, right? And within, depending from what country you are, what, you know, what custom you have. So, you know, and are we willing to teach our neighbors regarding that, right? And what biases we may have and, and are we open to that? And our educators and our children and our school district open to do that. Dr. Sener?
One of the things that I could have wallowed for days in the slide with the questions that we should be asking for our schools. And one of the things that I wrote down is, from that slide, is how is our district addressing these systemic issues that our students are coming to our schools with, right? Are we, are we putting a Band-Aid on or are, are we really getting at the root of the issues? And how much can we do as a school board? But obviously, I think we all want to do as much as we can. And I think as moving forward, I'm going to try to keep that in the back of my mind as, you know, as, as we make decisions. Are the decisions that we're making, at least attempting to chip away at those systemic issues that our students face?
Ms. Catano?
First of all, I, I want to thank you so much, Kelly. I know you have a very busy schedule and the fact that you came and, and trained us on, on the topic. It's, it means a lot. And also I just wanted to mention that, like you said, it's very, it's very hard to, to talk about the topic racism. And, and the fact that we waited until everything that is going on to kind of be more open about it. Let's just like make sure to be open, encourage people to talk about it and, and, and think what is the, the problem so we can actually get to the root and, and try to fix it or, or feel comfortable talking about it. So we can, we can see what we can do about what is going on.
Great, great suggestion. I took a screenshot, Dr. Sener, of those questions, so I emailed it out to all of you.
And Ms. Crissalis, I don't know if you can see that I have my hand up.
Oh, I didn't see it. I apologize.
That's okay. That's okay. People have lots of good comments and questions. I appreciate. So if I may?
Yes, of course.
Okay. I just have a few comments and, and a question. And, and I echo Ms. Catano's gratitude. Kelly, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your surname.
Oh, it's Kelly Mullen-Kanal.
Ms. Mullen-Kanal. Thank you so much.
Kelly, please.
Thank you for sharing your, your wisdom and your time with us. I, I think the, my first comment is I deeply appreciate the ending of the presentation with Einstein. I think many of us, rightfully so, know Einstein as a great mind and a leader in science and, and physics. And of course now with a, a need to focus on STEM. It's, it's important to, to focus on great thinkers like, like Einstein. A lot of us don't know that Einstein was anti-racist. Einstein was a great leader in the civil rights movement. Einstein spoke about racism being a disease of white people. Einstein compared the racism that exists and has existed in the United States against black folk, African-American folk, to the suffering he himself escaped from as a Jewish person in Nazi Germany. And when, I, I don't remember if it was Ms. Crissalis or, or Dr. Sener who asked, you know, what, what can we do? And, and this is hard. This is hard to do. You know, we, we can look to many, many leaders like, you know, Angel, Angel Davis, Dr. King, Malcolm X, and Einstein. You know, the, the man was a great physicist. He was a refugee and he was anti-racist. So, so you can do that work, whether you're a board member or a world-leading physicist to ensure anti-racism. That said, what is that work? We all talk about the work. We got to do this work. We got to be anti-racist. We've got to stop microaggressions. Oh, the racialized aggression, you know, political correctness. But what is the work? And you gave us some, which I appreciate. I certainly have taken the Harvard implicit bias test before and I took it again this time. And, and I, and I trust that our fellow board members did as well. And, and that's certainly one piece of it, right, figuring out what's going on in us. Another piece, and bringing it, you know, right back to Dover. We have historically, because we are a segregated school district like many in New Jersey, and we are a majority Latino school district. We have suffered racialized aggressions, certainly since I was in high school, which is back in the 90s, until now. And it seems like every time that it happens, it, it, it takes center stage the most when it happens in sports. When our majority Latino and Black basketball team or soccer team or whatever team it might be competes against a team that is majority white. And whether they are, the opposing team are dancing around sombreros or calling us derogatory names about either our race or ethnicity or both, the response is often this, "Well, we didn't mean it that way." Or, "You took it the wrong way." Or, "Lift your, we're better than that. We're just not going to respond." Or, "Or, or, or this is not the America I know. This is not the Dover I know. This is not the Jefferson I know." Yes, it is. And yes, it has been. It has been. It is. And it will continue to be unless we take concrete steps. So in addition to the, the test and, and exploring within ourselves, what concrete steps can we take? Whether that's reading a book, watching a documentary, inviting someone of a different religion or race or ethnicity over for dinner? You know, what concrete steps can we take within the field of education to become more anti-racist as Board of Education members and educators?
I, oh, wow, that's a big question. I think there are lots that you can do. First is, it's really interesting. You know, the company I used to work, Udes's company at Novartis, we had, when this hurt thing happened, I asked the CEO to watch "I Am Not Your Negro," James Baldwin's documentary. And I took an excerpt from that for him to listen to. It was after the Buckley, the Buckley debate. And what happened was interesting to me is that then other people started to ask me for more, right? And I recommended some, some others like 13th and reading the new Jim Crow. I mean, there are lots of things if you, in terms of, you know, I'm a geek about that. I have a list of things that I can share and, and information. But I, I, I'm really impressed by the conversation that you're all having and the commitment that's obvious that you have to really making this, this board strong and having an impact on these students. And I think the very fact that you're, you're curious and asking these questions and even engaging in this dialogue is something important that you're doing. Because you have the ability to impact the school and some of the decisions. And one of the things that they really, I think is important for any, for board members, I'm on a board of, of a Black Women's Health Imperative. And one of the things that is to ask about all these systems, right? And, and to afford some of the conversation and some accountability. Like the example that you gave, it's example that so many of us know very well. You know, people default into calling names or, and then, "I'm sorry, I didn't mean that. You're taking it wrong. You're overly sensitive." It's an opportunity, have the discussion with that school. And saying, "Look, next time, maybe we need to have some training for your athletes, you know, for your students, you know?" Demand some accountability. And because we've not done that, my kids were in high school and I remember, you know, these things happening. But I feel like now we need to demand the accountability, you know, from the school. If you see that happens, then the principal needs to do something. The students need to be able to do something. Those are the ways we can do little by little. Those are the ways we can do little by little. And what what is the type of history that's being taught in our school? Why not have as part of the curriculum, "I Am Not Your Negro"? It provides context to what's going on right now. Why not have the discussion? Why not show it in an auditorium, you know? Maybe this is a way you can engage with them and have that conversation and share with the school the IAT test. Say, you know, you don't have to share, the teachers don't have to share their the the results, but the very action, the exercise of going through it, maybe will help them understand a certain reality that we all have, these biases.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I I I'm very appreciative I see you, Ms. Mullen, for your conversations and your suggestions. And I hope that we can kind of internalize it and make steps happen, right? Action steps, right?
I'm sure that you guys are, I I I feel that you will. And it's great that you're taking this step.
Thank you. Ms. Mullen?
Just, it's been wonderful. But when I think of our students, I think that, you know, we're, we have to make sure that they're safe, that they're respected, and that all that we're doing in their education, empowering them. I mean, we have so much we have to work on and reflect on and all of that. But just while we're doing that, I just want to make sure that they always know that they're safe with us and that we respect them and, you know, and try to give them a voice as they go through our school.
Some point, Ms. Mullen, and really all of our students, right? If they're from different groups or same groups, or, you know, it's really us as board members, right? It's 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 our job is to ensure that all of them are feeling in that way. Mr. Robles?
I just wanted to add one more comment around the same thing that Ms. Mullen just said about, you know, how the students feel. And many of us from different, you know, scenarios, different backgrounds, different experiences, I think there isn't anybody who's never felt out of place, never felt, you know, like you didn't belong, like, you know, you weren't the top of the, you know, the cream of the crop at a certain setting. And if we think about, you know, the lowest of the lowest, and we treat people, you know, to try to help them get from wherever they are. And I'm not saying that people are in the lowest, but just get help them from wherever they are to somewhere better. I think we're starting in a good spot versus assuming that you need to be better already. You know, why aren't you performing? Why aren't you, you know, delivering as a student, as a family? And we don't know their their history. We don't know what they're going through as a family, as a home, what struggles they're going through. And I think many times people, and you know, us, you know, we just assume certain things versus just trying to find out, like you were saying, asking the questions. And I know our teachers, from my experience anyway, the teachers that I've worked with and and heard from, they try to do that and they try to, you know, try to help the students out, go out of their way. And I think as a educational system, we need to make sure that that's everybody in our system, that everybody in our educator system, our administration, obviously, the leaders who are here and those who work with them, that we always try to go above and beyond and just hear the families out, find out how can we help them, provide different avenues of helping them, not just say, "Oh, this worked. It should work for everybody." Maybe it doesn't. Maybe there are some where it doesn't work for that way. And not just close the door on certain things and think it should work for everybody the same way. And I think we do that. I think we, you know, we try to strive for that. But, you know, continuing to do that more, and obviously, the different perspectives that we have here helps towards that goal.
Thank you, Mr. Robles. I don't think I saw any other hands. I I think it's important also for our teachers, as we've mentioned, right? To to help them and support them because this might not be natural for some of them and it may be natural for others, right? And so I think it's important for us to create, you know, support them policies that can really assist them in regards to how do we all become an anti-racism district? Okay, all right. I don't know, Kelly, I don't want to take a lot more of your time. You've been here. I'm so grateful and and that it is, you know, at no cost to our district and our taxpayers. And, you know, your time is really valuable and I really appreciate that. And I know everyone as well. And thank you, Ms. Catano, for the connection. And yes, thank you for the Anti-Racism Ad-Hoc Committee for getting this done. I know it was a little bit of a lot of work, but I appreciate all of you. And I'm sure all of us do as well.
Well, thank you. It was an honor to be here with you this evening.
Thank you. And please stay in touch. Share that list with us, please.
Oh, yeah, I will. I will.
So I can share it with everyone else on the board as well.
It'd be my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Kelly, have a good one.
Bye. You too.
If we can just stay on so we can officially close and do all of our things?
Yes, because we have another public comment.
Yes, sir. I did not forget, so I appreciate that, though. Okay, so now we're gonna open the floor up to our second public comment. And the board recognizes the value of this public comment and on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves. To ensure fair and orderly expression of such comment, each statement shall be held to a time period of three minutes. Public comments are and public comments are limited to items on this agenda and shall be entered for the next 30 minutes upon the discretion of oneself. Since this is a virtual meeting occurring during COVID-19 shutdown, public comment has been solicited through the Google form on the district website. Members of the public can also participate during the public portion of the meeting through this Zoom session by activating the raised hand function. Please understand that public comment portions of our agenda are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather they are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. The board may or may not respond to public comments. However, all comments are considered and will be investigated and addressed as appropriate. Please be courteous and mindful of the rights of others when providing comments. Comments may not be abusive, obscene, threatening, or irrelevant. Please understand that students and employees have specific legal and privacy protections. The board is not permitted to respond to in public to comments about students or employees. Please be advised that you are commenting on your own risk. Any public comments that are directed at a particular individual or individuals could subject you to legal liability for defamation. Do we have any submitted questions or attendees?
There are none. There are none on the Google sheet.
And there are no attendees.
Okay, all right. So does this board have a motion to close this special meeting unless there's any other comments before we move? Okay, all right. So is there a motion to close?
I moved.
Mullen?
Becca.
And Ms. Catano has second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? None? And we are closing at 8:18. Mr. Menkowitz?
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your extra time this evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Be safe, everyone. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Have a good night.